Mr. Toro?
President.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Matuera?
Present.
Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Porter?
Here.
We have one public hearing this evening, and I just want to remind everyone that we have extended the public comments, uh, period for public hearings to four minutes. Just also remind people, if you're speaking on the public hearing, it's only what the public hearing is about this evening. Thank you. Public hearing number one is regarding the proposed twenty twenty-six operating budget for the city of Schenectady. And I have eight people signed up to speak. Uh, the first person is Joe Anderson. Haley Leparo.
Good evening. It's so weird being on this end of things. Uh, council president, city council mayor, um, speaking in my capacity as a city resident, homeowner, and president of Boulevard Appreciation Neighborhood Association, also known as Vanna. Uh, with my years in the city, previously covering the city as a reporter and being involved with several local boards and nonprofits, I hope things would never get so dire that I had to speak during a council meeting. I was very conflicted in doing so today, but, um, deeply troubled that I felt I had no choice. I have been proud to be a cheerleader for Schenectady. Schenectady is a shining example of how a city can turn around years of industrial decline and start anew whilst celebrating its culture and history. Crime has decreased, downtown has become a destination, Mohawk Harbor has been transformed, and surrounding areas and neighborhoods have seen investment and hope, with more work still to be done, of course. As rents downtown and everywhere steadily climb, I decided it made more financial sense and a better long-term investment to purchase my first home here in the city I love, which was very exciting. Uh, but unfortunately for many, the cost of housing continues to increase. In addition to increasing costs for groceries, utilities, and elder necessities, people are struggling, can't afford a decent quality of life, and some must choose between purchasing food for their families or paying their bills. So this year's whopping seventeen percent tax increase, and again, seventeen percent, and another significant increase in garbage reuse proposed in the mayor's budget is just inexcusable and unacceptable. Uh, the mayor says the issue is loss of ARCA funding and increasing healthcare costs, but ARCA funding we knew was a one-time opportunity and went to several capital projects and struggling nonprofits, and every municipality is facing increasing healthcare costs, yet none have proposed this massive tax increase. So something doesn't really add up. The casino was supposed to decrease taxes, and now they're asking for a reduction, which must be addressed and dismissed. We have cannabis shops in the city that are supposedly bringing in tax revenue. We have all the development and progress over the years that should be expanding our tax base, but instead, this budget is moving us backwards rather than forward and puts individuals and families at risk. On top of the large tax increase, there is the issue of garbage collection. Uh, the sticker program with fees for bulk items was botched with a floor rollout, and the program isn't really enforceable. It's just another burden on the average homeowner while still increasing garbage fees in this budget. Clearly, how we do sanitation needs to be reevaluated and overhauled. On top of that, the city is looking to do a city library assignment, potentially starting the process next year, I believe, uh, which will agree, again, increase the amount some home homeowners pay in taxes based on their assessed home values. So while we thought Schenectady was, um, the up, the enforcement reality that this budget is telling us is actually the opposite. All of these increases cannot be permitted to move forward for the future of Schenectady and the lives of our residents. Cuts need to be made, and efficiencies need to be found, while expanding the tax grade, tax base and bringing in more revenue. So I urge the mayor and the city council to do their due diligence and really work together to address these glaring issues for our future, because Schenectady is a great city. I love Schenectady, uh, and it has such a strong sense of community that we really exemplify throughout New York State. Um, but all of that is unfortunately really being threatened here by this budget. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, um, the next person is Louis. His last name starts with an S. It's supposed to be a penny. Close.
Good evening. Um, I'm here because, um, I, what I do for work is, um, I set up potential, um, appointments for potential homeowners, and I noticed, um, that when I went to try to find out information, uh, a solicitor's permit here is five hundred dollars, um, and considering that Clifton Park is two hundred.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes?
Are you speaking to the budget? Because that's what this public hearing is about. If not, I would have to move you to another part of the agenda. This is specifically about the budget.
Okay. I do apologize about that.
It's not a problem. Not at all. I'll move you to, uh, general city business. Okay? Go find your guy.
So, so, okay.
So, yes, you have to, if it's not about the budget, that's what the public hearing is about. I'll move you to another part of the agenda to speak to any city business, specifically about the budget. But please stay.
Right here?
No, not right here. So I'll call you again. Okay? Thank you. Sean Radigan?
Um, yeah, I'm Sean Radigan, and, uh, I'm here tonight, uh, because I'm opposed to the twenty twenty-six budget proposal. Uh, this proposed budget, I estimate, would increase my monthly mortgage payments by at least fifty dollars a month, and I'm already severely housing burdened as I pay over fifty percent of my income toward my housing. And it's not like I don't make enough, and I make like seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So I can only imagine how the rest of the city is doing. At a time where doubts are being lost, federal medical aid is being slashed, and consumer protections are being eliminated, I need my local government to not make the situation worse. The narrative that I've heard to justify this budget is that a loss of ARCA funds created a six million dollar deficit. Well, I just don't think that narrative is accurate, since the ARCA funds that are listed from twenty twenty-five are listed as three million dollars. Since I haven't heard any other justification for this budget in an official capacity, I started to look after the numbers myself. In a breadth-first analysis, the general fund is set at about a hundred and twenty million, five hundred thousand dollars. The water, sewer, and golf funds all appear as transfer funds to other funds, so I'll make the assumption that those are relatively standable. If you look at the largest cost centers of the general fund, they are employee benefits at thirty-five point eight percent, with police department at twenty point eight percent, the fire department at eleven point six percent, and then debt service at eight point three percent. I'm seeing that employee benefits includes a seventeen million dollar, uh, going payment to MVP for insurance, a cost that would be mitigated if we would all just support the New York Health Act, but that's off topic. So, since I don't want employee benefits to suffer, let's take a look at the police department, which is the second largest strain on the budget and one-fifth of the general fund. The police chief is listed at a salary of a hundred and eighty-five thousand point seven, a hundred and eighty-five point seven thousand dollars, which seems like a lot. So I looked up the average paper of police chief in Albany, and it's about a hundred thousand dollars. So why does our, why do our police chiefs make eighty-five thousand dollars more than Albany? The assistant police chiefs make a hundred and eighty-one thousand, lieutenants make a hundred and fifteen thousand, sergeants, sergeants, a hundred and one thousand, officers make fifty, seventy, uh, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, or ninety thousand, depending on the grade in the department. The budget lists a hundred and eighty-four and a half headcount for the police department, consuming twenty-five million dollars of the general fund. The fire department lists a hundred and twenty-five point eight headcount, consuming forty percent less at fourteen million dollars of the general fund, while the police department is down in spending by six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That's only two point six percent of their budget line. To make up for that, though, in capital projects, the police department is asking for three SUVs, four armored cars, one parking, whatever that means, and an evidence vehicle, whatever that means, too. And the evidence storage solution, and that all costs seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So let me level with you. Times are hard right now. People are on fixed incomes, and they're severely housing burdened. We went over this during the good cause eviction, uh, talks a number of times. Depending on zip code, people are forty to fifty percent of people are housing burdened. They're paying more than thirty percent of their income to keep a roof over their head. We're being asked to do more with less, and frankly, I can't believe that our police department employs a hundred and eighty-four people with a large portion of them making the same wage as an opening police chief. So let me summarize for what I'm looking for. I want more transparency. This budget was clearly made with itself, and I'm working off of a PDF, which makes it incredibly difficult to analyze. I want a tiered tax system that taxes, that, that taxes that have, uh, haves more than have-nots. I want more focus on big cost centers, such as benefits, police, fire, and debt. I want more money being invested in infrastructure solutions and not police and enforcement. Stop issues by fundamentally solving them, not by sending out another person on patrol. I can, I can only imagine what we could do with twenty-five million budget in, in infrastructure solutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and residents and council members. My name's Ellie Pepper, and I'm a Schenectady resident who follows these budgets closely, because they shape the lives of families, seniors, and working people who make this city what it is. The proposed twenty twenty-six budget raises total spending to about a hundred and twenty million, a three point one seven percent increase over last year. It raises the property tax rate from thirteen point three to fifteen point seventy-seven per thousand, a two point three nine point increase that exceeds the state tax cap. For many of us, that's not just a number. It's money that can cover groceries, prescriptions, or heating bills. Schenectady already has one of the highest property tax rates in the nation, and this increase will push us even higher. We were told that casino revenue would help lower taxes and stabilize the city's finances, so I have to ask, where is that money going? We were promised that the casino would bring huge tax collections, but those savings never reached the residents. The public deserves to see exactly how much casino revenue the city has received, how it's been spent, and why we're still being asked to exceed the state cap. I understand that taxes are, costs are rising. They're rising for everybody, for health insurance, retirement, and debt service, but before asking residents to pay more, there needs to be a clear plan for cost control. What steps are being taken to contain benefits, manage overtime, or refinance existing debt? Meanwhile, capital spending for the police department needs to be ringing in. Why do we need four new unmarked vehicles next year? I understand they replace older cars, but this is not the time. If we're exceeding the state tax cap, non-essential replacements should wait. We also heard that crime is down, yet we're also told the department needs more hardware and software because crime is increasing, to the tune of a fifty-one percent increase in that line. Those two things just can't be true. Either crime is down or it isn't. If the data show improvement, the spending should reflect that. And while many residents are tightening their belts, executive and management level employees are receiving raises of eight to twenty-four percent. For example, the mayor's executive secretary is getting a nine percent increase, justified as a way to align with the police chief's executive secretary, who, by the way, is set for a twenty-four percent increase. These raises are hard to justify when the people footing the bill, the taxpayers, are lucky to see a three percent raise in a good year. We spent a lot of time this year talking about how rents are too damn high during the good cause eviction debate. Well, here's the reality. These tax increases will land squarely on renters, too. When landlords see their property taxes rise, they will pass that cost along. So even tenants who don't own property will feel this, the same people who can at least afford it. Departments that deliver direct public value are being cut or frozen, youth employment eliminated, even though it's one of the few proven preventive programs we have. Animal control, still one person. Fire department stretched thin with overtime and vacancies. If we're paying more, we should be seeing more, not less. Before my final adoption, I urge the city to issue a plain language, one-page summary explaining where the increases are, who benefits, and how outcomes will be measured. We need transparency and accountability and a commitment to stop using tax hikes as a default solution to budget problems. I'm not against investing in our city. I'm against doing it without a plan, without fairness, and without honesty about who bears the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Maravero?
Good evening, mayor and president, uh, city council members and mayor. My name is Dean Maravero, and I'm a longtime resident of the city of Schenectady. Why is it that large sums of money are always allotted to Schenectady Police Department for the city's budget proposals? Some will answer that without that money, crime will occur, or the citizens will no longer be safe. What about directing large amounts of money to program that can heat to a lesser need for policing? Not all citizens benefit from increased policing. To always default to single punishment as a means for controlling behavior leads to, one, minimal illegal change behaviors, two, job security for those in the business of policing, and, three, a divided population. Put more money in the budget on equitable prevention and stop supporting an holiday institution that does not positively serve all the citizens of Schenectady. Thank you.
Thank you, more?
Good evening, city council, mayor Markey. I am a four-year resident of the city. Previously, I was a resident of the county, and, um, I advise to bring up something that's a very small part of the budget, but I was quite surprised to read about it in the Gazette, and that is the loss of funding for teen employment in the city parks for Schenectady. Um, with the rise in inflation as expected, the loss of employment that's expected in the coming months, uh, in the coming year, I think that a program that provides, um, employment for teenagers is something that Schenectady should not give up. Once it's given up, it's very hard to restore. I note that the county is not doing the same, and I would ask that this be reconsidered. Um, I'm a resident that lives near Central Park, and I find that teenagers working there in the summertime, as well as in other city parks, uh, is a very useful, uh, use of our funds, and it's already hard for teenagers to find employment in retail as those jobs are being taken, uh, by older, uh, citizens. So I'd ask that we reconsider that particular cut, as small as it is in the budget. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson?
Yeah, I'm Eric Johnson, mayor, president of the corner of the council. Good to be here tonight with you. My message is, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, better teamwork as we're developing this budget this year. Last year had quite a bit of contention. It was, um, not kind of cordiality and professional legislative behavior that I'd like to see out of my leaders. So I implore you to work, uh, across, you know, look on legislative executive to work through this as quickly as you can. There's a lot of work to be done. Even though as a percentage of, uh, when you take out, um, the rate of inflation, this is only an increase of about one point four percent, budgetally, in the basis. There's still a lot of cost increases that we need to, um, deal with, healthcare, right? You've got the organized laborers at the table. They should have a part of this conversation. It appears to me in analysis of your budget that there are some assumptions that need a second look. Uh, for instance, the, the, um, casino has only gone from three point nine running payment last year to four running this year and four point one running with the next year's budget, and that just doesn't jive to me, considering they were being kind of big contributors to our bottom line. I saw, uh, a flat line on marijuana, um, taxes, and that actually doesn't make sense to me, because I think when I walk around, I smell a lot of things that would indicate that that industry's doing just fine. Um, I find it hard to accept that the residents should pay the tax increase on their real estate tax and a twenty-five to thirty percent increase in their garbage fees and a fifteen percent increase in their water fees. So there's been prospect varied in this. There's some assumptions in this budget, which, you know, the mayor's staff does the best they can, but I think they need to be given a second look, and I just really encourage you all to work as closely as you can, as are the heirs, to solve this problem, um, so that we can all work forward. It is a rainy day, right? We have, uh, two, two million dollars pulled out of our rainy day fund, and maybe it's time to reconsider buying the fancy new undercover, um, police car or the, uh, improvements to the unused, uh, home house in, in the Stockade. I just think that it's time to all tighten our belts and get a good budget together. So thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. So at this time, I have no one else signed up to speak on the public hearing for the budget. So, okay, so I thought, I thought that might happen, because people aren't accustomed, and I should explain that. So if you would like to speak, you can come forward. Is there anyone else that did not sign up because they didn't know, come on, come on, that did not know our process? Okay. So, uh, if you could just say your name, please?
Good evening. I'm Dawn Whiteford. I live in the Jeep plot. I'm at eleven oh nine Adams Road, uh, and thank you all so much for your time and being here. I know most of you, and, uh, I appreciate it. So, uh, I spent thirty years writing corporate America on art and marketing and advertising. I recently retired from that and decided to get my real estate license, which I greatly enjoyed for almost the past year, and I can tell you the on-the-ground feedback from people that come into the plot wishing to buy a home or the Stockade. The very first question that we get is how much are the taxes? And I cannot tell you the number of people that turn away from buying a home here because of the level of the taxes as they exist today. So between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty, we saw an easy appreciation on our property value of about one and a half to two percent per year. Since COVID, we have seen on average of about fifty-two percent appreciation in our overall property value, which is a ginormous gain for the people of this town, right? They haven't been used to really no gain whatsoever. It's allowed them to take out mortgages, to, you know, create home improvement, put their kids through college, whatever that may be. And, you know, with a seventeen percent increase, everything that I've just talked about that's good will be absolutely wiped away. I am right now under contract. Uh, you guys may know the Hillcroft Mansion at the corner of Knott and Wendell. Um, we have very, very strong buyers for that home. However, today was our inspection, and I spent forty-five minutes talking with the new potential buyers about what this tax increase might mean for them. And basically, the response was if they felt that the tax increase was going to be approved, that they would pull out of the deal, which is not surprising. So, you know, a lot of really great things have been said by other people that I don't want to readdress. I'm really asking you to think about home values and what that means for residents of this city. This is the single biggest investment that most humans make, and a seventeen percent increase will not only drive down our home property values, because we'll have fewer people living, you know, willing to live here, but obviously, people have got to pay that bill. And in today's climate, with what's going on federally, it's going to be a very, very tough proposition for many. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare, declare public hearing closed. This time, ask for the approval of the minutes from September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Move by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Farley, all is in favor. Uh, ask the court to please read any communications and petitions. Communications presented to city council for Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Under official, from the mayor's office appointment, stated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Under general, from Joe Anderson, an online sponsor, urging the preservation of permanent NEO positions in the twenty twenty-six budget to protect career opportunities, morale, and service quality. From Dawn Whiteford, an email warning that the property tax increase could hurt the real estate market, burden residents on fixed incomes, and negatively impact small businesses. From David Gentile, an email urging the city to widen the J Street connector share loose path beyond eight feet to meet the safety standards and better accommodate diverse pedestrian and service. From Haley Leparo, email criticizing proposed seventeen percent tax increase in housing fees, urging the city to reconsider budget priorities to protect residents and the community. From Mary Ann Muscuta, an email suggesting converting a portion of fund stream to be one way to reduce cut-through traffic, improve safety, and prevent blockages for emergency vehicles. And a voicemail from Tony Seraphini regarding concerns about the twenty twenty-six tax increase. Under petitions, there were none. Thank you. Any committee reports from the city council members? This time, I have a privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, and I have no one signed up to speak on legislative agenda, so I declare the public comment period closed. At this time, I ask for approval of the legislative consent agenda. Move by Mr. Matuera, second by Ms. Wayes, all is in favor. Uh, thank you. Now, we will have preference on the floor regarding general city business, and I have seven people who have signed up to speak. The first person is Ed Nene Junior. He just signed with his portion of the screen, yes.
Good evening. The mayor's council meetings several times have given all of you positive proof of the crimes. Judges Frost and Valatito committed an election record. Tanika Frost was an administrative law when the mayor appointed her to be a judge. She certainly believed she could assign motion about affidavit or proof of service and forced the court to serve her. The appointed Valatito also ran on a post. Valatito, Valatito acted on a motion to open for affidavit of service and prohibited. This is obstruction of justice. Valatito vacated my default judgment eleven days before a trial was a crime. Eighteen U.S. secret, you know, obstruction of court orders. I brought these plans to all of you. Mayor, you are an executive. You are mandated by law to appoint Valatito to the chief judge of the honor. Now you are part of a conspiracy among the council members. You can add this to the list. County attorney, district attorney, United States attorney Barnett, attorney here in this committee, Kamishgane District Court. They threw my paperwork away, but sent me a denial with their address. Your mayor also guilty of election fraud by keeping Valatito's crimes off of news in his local papers. You won't afford a term. I went to election. There were three times by even Valatito. No response. I went to election, there were three times by even Falotico, no response. You had to ask him, you had Falotico love for security court because you really could keep the truth out of the newspapers and news channels. I wrote to, I went, I wrote to your co-conspirator, the New Will, before the election, John Billis, about you and Falotico. You rewarded him with having CDT, CDTA paid 300,000 to gazette the parking spaces. He sued after he bought the gazette. Now he has bought more newspapers with the CDTA and more parking spaces. Is this what you are calling the loose connected, with garbage taxes of 200, 175 a year? You belong in a jail cell, Mr. Frost and Falotico. I also sent proof to WNG News and 13 Investigates. How did you reward their status? Did you get their taxes over while you raised all of ours? This is not loose connected. It's a same corrupt base of shit and they're very rich corruption and fires on us corporate councils and makes their city for backpack. They've also gone to two significant legislators, uh, three times, no response. Let's see what Trump and Biden do for you. Let's see if they have a problem with corrupt judges and mayor and city council. Mayor can appoint the judges, but doesn't have jurisdiction over that. How's that work, Mayor? What about your crap?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank God.
Thank you, anger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to address a serious failure that is directly impacting the people of Skankin. The garbage picker program introduced and pushed forward under President Cornerfield's leadership. This program, instead of providing fair and applicable solution, has created confusion, frustration, and other unfair costs for our residents without solving the city's budget challenges. For years, homeowners consistently placed their trash out for collection without needing to buy stickers or count bags. Now they must purchase stickers for large items and keep track of the number of bags they put out. The system is complicated, inconvenient, and unfair, especially to seniors and families on fixed income. The city hopes this program will help reduce waste and align costs, but the opposite has happened. Garbage fees have risen sharply and the city still faces a $4 million deficit in the 2025 budget, which now exceeds 120 million. Landfill ticket fees declining to $57 per ton. Their residents are paying more with no clear maintenance and service for budget control. President Cornerfield ignored repeated warnings about these rising costs and the shortcomings of the sticker program. The result is an ineffective policy that penalizes taxpayers rather than offers responsible waste management solutions. These concerns are not theoretical. They are the same issues we have heard repeatedly from residents as we have been walking door to door throughout the entire city. People are telling us they are confused by the stickers, frustrated by the rising fees, and worried about how this program unfairly impacts them without delivering results. The good news, there are realistic solutions that won't pass more costs on disconnected residents and can make the system fair and more efficient. Allow residents to schedule pickups for ball or access items directly with the city. Instead of upfront sticker purchases, bill property owners ways of actual services used. This reduces hassle and insurance fairnessness. Invest more in waste reduction and education in recycling programs. Other communities have shown that better recycling can significantly reduce disposal costs, saving cities more without rising fees. Increase enforcement against illegal dumping, which often arises in sticker programs burdening residents. Strong enforcement assures everyone pays their fair share and keeps their credit clean. Consider a modest transparency-wide waste fee that fairly distributes costs across all households. This avoids complicated pro-able fees that are confusing and costly to manage. These ideas focus on fairness, transparency, and practical service improvements, not on shipping costs to our working families. In summary, the garbage picker program is a failure rooted in President Cornerfield's leadership. As briefly has created unnecessary garbage shares for residents and has not fixed our city's financial challenges. It's time for new leadership and new solutions to put the people of Skankin first. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Bob.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Madam President. Before I get to speak out to the mayor, which is a remark from the last council meeting from last month, I want to say that an upcoming event that's happening on the 30th, the last 30 days of this month, at my trip, trip to Nanjing Castle Road, 25th, 35th Castle Road, on the 30th of this month, provides something we have in trunk, T R U, and K, where tree, their go sign and pay young age at the same time. If you all can make it, you all are delighted, break their trip property, buy popcorn or not. Now, before I speak, I want to say this is tricky, my king. What about the sale? And also, I haven't seen much here before I say, it basically says, stop human trafficking, got children, which we all are, are not for sale. Long with the head, man. Me, so I can dial up is because it is, from my understanding, the last council meeting, we had a discussion among this government body about a South caller being operated within the city limits. Now, prior to that, that discussion, a South caller somewhere in Ramada was raided by the police. Hence the fact that I'm about to discuss with that and another matter is this. South callers have been known as a hood of human trafficking. And what I call, and has been coming to light, the dark side of human trafficking, which tags in with the dark side of DSS and child welfare, the human trafficking sector, because a lot of innocent lives have been ruined with that. What I mean by that is a lot of young women and children. I'm been know to them, I get through well, have been involved in human trafficking and sex trade because of very dangerous gangs down in South America area of the world and other areas like that that control the human trafficking sector. Now, assuming child welfare because of Steve Sholoff, the district, and CIS, movies like Sound Freedom, have all dealt with the human trafficking sector. And thank God it has come to light because as someone who's gone through the system across here, I'm glad that the dark side has just come to light. Now, the other issue, back then, in 2008, I came to the government body. I told you exactly what the agents of ICE have been doing in regards to community. When you confront somebody or individuals, what they're doing is checking to make sure that documentation, immigration papers, visas, student work, course visits are correct up to date and checking the background. Rejacking this up again because I felt a resident has said, and I spoke to the mayor and his council, I heard the mayor's council made this much historic city a safe city, which is against the constitution, mind you, and I work with federal law enforcement. Now, why would a resident do that? I can tell you why. Because unfortunately, instead of looking up the truth as I stated, what ICE is actually doing, they rather believe they're live, prepared by the level media and the government bodies like this. I told you the truth about what's happening with ICE in the communities. They know why you all work with ICE? I know you all work with law enforcement and treaty banners and issues.
You touched on this prior to this.
Yeah, I'm, I've been someone up here, I'm sure.
No, right now.
And seeing that now this has become an issue of safety, because how are we coming up? Right? I know you all want, you know, want one to know that I go near good parts. You don't want pedophiles or whatnot up there.
You touched on this prior to this.
I heard the council and the mayor work with law enforcement.
Thank you. Sean Reddigan?
So I knew I wouldn't be able to get it all in four minutes, but anyways, I just wanted to reiterate that point about like new homeowners in the city. I've been here for two years now. And, yeah, I mean, the taxes really are very crippling when it comes to taking out mortgage. They're a very large portion of my payment, a little of my principal. You know, an increase on that, I can definitely see that that's a deciding factor for new people coming into the city. You know, especially when you're talking about affordable housing not really being available. You know, the housing stock that we have is aging. We really need to be mindful of that tax rate. On a separate issue, I would like to adjust as the newly, uh, energy storage is back on the agenda. I would just like to, you know, once again, bring forward the public power campaign, the New York Public Power Campaign, and, you know, ask for the city to investigate funding through the New York Power Authority, which is allocated so that municipalities and state entities can build out publicly-owned renewable power that serves us instead of relying on fossil fuels.
Thank you. Chris, you're going?
Good evening. Um, it's like the whole bus party in here. You know exactly what I was typing up. Anyway, I just wanted to bring to our attention that there is a distinct issue with human trafficking in Skankin, New York. In 2024 alone, there was nearly 1,200 signal records to the National Trafficking Hotline in New York State. Now, it doesn't state specifically, you know, what city they're actually coming from. I wish we had a report. We don't even have anything for 2025. And I happily, the statistics really dropped off about reports and incidences in 2020. So, um, safe incorporated data from 2019 to 2020, the Skankin organization assisting at risk youth reported that out of 226 trafficking cases in the capital region between 2019 and 2020, over 90% of victims were minors. The organization noted that the capital region and Skankin in particular serves as a hub for traffickers due to its central location on major highways. Now, these are not my words. I didn't want to miss anything. I wanted straight facts. You can look at Wikipedia. I did retract a couple of words, but if nobody understands what human trafficking is, I'm just going to educate everybody here. Human trafficking is the act of recruiting, transporting, transferring, harboring, or receiving individuals through force, fraud, coercion, for the purpose of exploitation. This exploitation may include forced labor, sexual slavery, or other forms of commercial sexual exploitation. It is considered a serious violation of human rights and a form of modern slavery. It does happen. It does exist. It's very prevalent in this community. There are not, uh, there's nothing suitable here for victims of human trafficking. I personally have seen it where people, you know, call into the human trafficking hotline and it goes to a, basically dead signal. One person can be affected, uh, one person, I'm sorry, can report it and that one person can affect potentially thousands of people because of the people who are behind the organization. And in addition to that, human trafficking victims face threats of violence from many sources, traffickers, and correct law enforcement officials, and even from family members who not want to have any link with them because of their potentially complicated legal status and their potential language barriers, emotional trauma for trafficking victims. The challenges facing victims often continue back to removal from coercive exploitation in addition to coping with their past traumatic experiences. Former trafficking victims often experience, well, am I all set? Like, how is it, son?
You can finish your sentence if you'd like.
It just goes by sun, you know, but there is a huge problem. There are not enough resources in this area and it links directly back to, you know, minors homelessness, which is a major, major problem in the city. Walking downtown, which I often do not do, I did recently, and it's smelly here and homeless people living out on the streets and that's where this starts from. So I just wish that there was more of a transparent communication between our government here and, you know, enabling some type of resources for children, women, and men, all different backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Kennedy?
Good evening, the room, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, honorable council members. Uh, my name is Tom Kennedy. I'm the chair of the Republican Party here in City of Skankin. I rise to talk about the pending proposed budget. I wish I could say that we didn't know that we're going to be here, but remember, we've been here quite a few times. In fact, I was going over our press releases today. Since 2020, 2022, we've issued 15 press releases. Warning, using the ARCA funds was going to put us in a position that we're here today. As I look at the, it's often put in the newspaper that, if you can make it to read it off, proposed tax rate would raise that to $20 per, per month for a home assessed value of $100,000. Well, if you go on Google, you can go on Zillow and find the average home price is $318,000. If you translate that money to $20 a month for $100,000 assessed value, that tax bill for that person, including the increase in the garbage duty, which is taxed when you raise the fees, you're raising taxes. That bill will be for that person, $868 a year. So there's not many houses worth $100,000 in City of Skankin, and there's some that's quite a bit over $318,000. So the tax bill is going to be excessive. Now, I heard, as I mentioned, heard, if I went through the daily visit, I picked out some things that council members were concerned about. You know, and I, one of the people in front, I could talk about the employment problem. Now, look, I understand that we like to keep all those programs, they're good programs. However, when you're faced with that type of an increase, as I go around, when I talk to our people, they're worried about eating, they're worried about paying on the mortgage, they're paying about the rent. So when these, when this, when these tax bills hit, let me tell you something. Everybody's worried about rents here, that's one of your big, big issues. We think of rents anyway. So all these things, all this money that's being put out there, uh, is going to raise taxes to the point where it's going to affect everyone's lives in the City of Skankin. So why urge you as you go through your budget is you look at what's needed, very much needed from people who are trying to eat versus having your, you have your, uh, your programs. I was going to leave you with one thing. It was back in, back in 2023, uh, the council used unapproved ARCA funds that if approved, what they were, will blow the city's finances to $91 million in federal funding that will not be available in 2024, which will be 2025. Well, they cut public safety budgets. They know that you're creating an unsustainable budget deficit. So what you've done with continuing to approve ARCA funding, you have created a deficit now that we're paying. And it's now going to hit every aspect of the city taxes and city residents. So we'll probably talk about this more later, but it's something that I want everybody to be quite aware of it because and I'll leave, I'll leave, get the question about the president, just want to leave with everybody. We're worried about people eating, paying their bills, and being able to put gas in their tank. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis? Yes, come back and say your last name for me, please.
My last name is Chiketti, right, so it's spaghetti.
Oh. So, uh, I'm making, uh, a claim here that, uh, so the solicitor's permit, um, fee for you guys is five hundred dollars. Now, I have permits in town of Clifton Park, town of Esquimaia, town of Methland, and, uh, town of Delta. Now, even if you look at a permit that costs two hundred dollars, for example, in the town of Clifton Park, um, it is two hundred dollars. There's a, another, another fee, but it's not really that much. But I am curious to, um, one of the concerns I have is this city requires five hundred dollars for a solicitor's permit. Now, um, knowing that we all have to make a living and we all have to, uh, uh, do it the right way. I'm a Christian. I follow Jesus. I'm blessed. And I'm redeemed by his grace. And, um, having said that, um, I want to do the right thing. But I don't think it's worth it to pay five hundred dollars for a solicitor's permit or for the company I work for to pay five hundred dollars, uh, for itself. For example, uh, New York State has driven out a lot of businesses. Um, a lot of businesses have left the state. For example, Chick-fil-A didn't want a new business in the Albany area for years. Uh, for example, um, over a hundred thousand residents of New York State leave every single year to go to states like Florida, Texas, North Carolina, South Carolina due to its robust economy and its lower taxes, Second Amendment rights, and we could go on through the whole list. So me being twenty-five years old, um, a young man and Lord, and, um, you know, and knowing my generation's going to have a very hard time trying to find jobs due to inflation, due to taxes and stuff, um, I would like, A, to hear you guys to take a step to make the solicitor's permit application drop it from five hundred to two hundred bucks. Uh, so that people, and not even just with that, with other things too, if you guys can drop down the rate because knowing my age, people my age are moving to other states because they are, um, fed up with the corruption, with the high taxes, with, um, having to, uh, pledge allegiance to, uh, be a part of one political party if you are a state, if you work at a state job. And the fact that, um, that it's very tight here and, um, I mean, you could even go into a lot of these buildings in Skid City, they look like they're falling apart. Who really wants to come here and get a house? I mean, you go to, I've, I've gone to Charlotte or Carolina seven times, six times, and they're building and 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 building. And people are, it's massively growing. And like I said, over a hundred thousand New York residents leave New York State every single year because they're fed up. So for me being twenty-five, I don't see a future here for me. I don't see a future unless you guys are to decrease the taxes and to refund money to those who have paid outstanding amounts, um, in rates of taxes. So thank you for your time and God bless you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment of city business quarters. At this time, entertain any miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Patrick?
Thank you. Um, first, I'd like to say that, uh, we're having, the Skid City Shares Group is having a special, uh, food drive during the month of October. Uh, it will benefit Concerned for the Hungries, uh, Thanksgiving, uh, uh, baskets, um, and, uh, it's in conjunction with, um, the, uh, the honor that we received to be the grand marshal in the Skid City's holiday parade, so we're excited about that. Um, there is a list of collection sites and selected, suggested items. Um, that can be found on the Skid City County, uh, website under their special events, uh, tab there. I can give that to people if, uh, if they need it. Um, also, I wanted to mention that, uh, today was, uh, really great to see the Erie Canal boat, the Seneca Chief, um, arrived in Skid City. It traveled from Buffalo, was heading down, well, tomorrow to Waterford, uh, and then heading down to New York City. It's all in celebration of the two-hundredth anniversary of the Erie Canal. Uh, and that was a great, uh, great celebration today. I appreciated being there. Um, also, um, this weekend is the, uh, pierogi run, the five K, uh, in the, uh, that's in honor of, uh, Polish, Polish American Heritage Month. Uh, we will be doing a proclamation celebrating Polish American Heritage Month. Uh, and, uh, so I wish everyone well that is going to be participating in that run this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wintiver?
Thank you. Uh, I would address, like, uh, to thank, um, all the speaker who came out this evening to voice their, uh, concern about the budget. Um, your concern is duly noted. And, um, I'm sure that, uh, we will take those into consideration as we continue our, uh, budget hearing. Our next budget hearing is scheduled for tomorrow, uh, five thirty P M. in room one ten. And I encourage everyone to participate. Please join us online, show up in room one ten, listen what's happening. Uh, continue to voice your concern because we do, I do, and I'm sure my colleagues do, listen to your concern and we are concerned. There's no secret that, um, the proposed budget is calling for a massive tax increase and with selection fee. That is something I hope that, um, the mayor and my colleagues, including myself, will work together to come to some compromise and we can get a budget that is, that is for the people of Skid City. Because we, whatever we do within this budget will affect everyone. It will affect renters because we all know for a fact, every time there's a rent, there's an increase in city housing, renters are facing with the burden of a rental increase. And we have seen cost increase across all spectrum. And we need to address that. We need to be concerned of costs. Uh, at the same time, we need to tighten our belt. As I have said over the years, as the chairs, we need to tighten our belt and this year, it is the year that we need to tighten our belt more and to deliver a budget that is for the people of Skid City. So please, I encourage you to continue to voice your concern, continue to let us know what's happening out there. And please attend the next hearing tomorrow, five thirty. And then we will, the council, my colleagues and the mayor, we will go to deliberation and hopefully that we can have a budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor? Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so, Madam President, I want to say that, you know, I lived in Skid City my entire life and I think that what we're seeing right now, I, I was, you know, being born and raised there, I've seen what happened when G E moved a significant amount of operations out of the city. Um, so we've seen kind of some of the, really the tough times that Skid City has faced. Um, fortunate enough to witness the resurgence of the, the resurgence downtown and investments coming into our city, which are a really great thing. Um, but what I haven't seen, um, in the good times and even the bad times is people, families actually living in the street, sleeping in the streets of our city. That to me is a huge red flag and it really is an indicator of how rough things are for some of the people that are living in our city. Um, working at, with food pantries and, and service delivery for all of these years, I see people who are gainfully employed people and people who are really working, wanting to do jobs, you know, hardworking people trying to take care of their families, who are taking advantage of these services and are writing out that they haven't before. So the writing is on the wall and it's been on the wall for some time now. What I want to encourage the council to do, working with the administration, is to think about those people as we move into this, uh, budget negotiations. I think that if we are, if, you know, if we concentrate on the people who this budget will impact the most, who are most vulnerable population, and we do write by them, then I think that we will reach a, a, a budget in a situation that really allows us to make responsible decisions, um, uh, fiscally, but also makes us uphold our values and our commitment to one another as community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate everyone who's come out tonight, their thoughts and comments. This budget process has been difficult and challenging. Again, there's a number of things that are coming together against the loss of arco funding. City of Skid City, our state aid formula receives less than corresponding communities across the state that are very similar, Utica, Rome, Binghamton. Uh, again, healthcare has doubled in the last five years. Uh, we're self-insured, so it's not like we can go to another plan. Uh, again, it's managing those costs and wellness programs internally. But again, I look forward to continuing discussions with the council to, uh, put in place a balanced and fair budget, excuse me, as we go forward in a timely manner by November first. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd also like to thank everyone that came out tonight to speak. It's really, really great to hear from our residents that have concerns about our budget. It is, uh, the mayor's proposed budget is, you know, giving us a very large increase and I believe that as a council, we'll work together that it's, what we end up doing is not something that is detrimental to so many residents in the city of Skid City, which it has the potential to be. So we have our work certainly cut out for us. So, um, you know, we're, we're working on that and, uh, we have a couple of days set aside by our chair, uh, of the finance committee, but it may take a couple more days. But we're putting the time to make sure that we have a budget that's, uh, that's livable and that doesn't burden our taxpayers to the degree that it currently could. I'd also like to make a clarification on something that was said tonight regarding the, uh, the program for the bulk items. Uh, first of all, that was a program that was brought forth by our Commissioner General Services, not introduced by myself. Just want to clear that. It's, I have it in, uh, for the record. That is also recorded, so you can go back and watch. So that's not a program that I introduced. And additionally, there was a, uh, there was an ask that we do the bag count. And the bag count is voted down. We do not require currently people to count their bags of, of garbage. That is not a fact. So it was proposed, we voted, well, the majority of the council voted no. I was one of those no votes. So just to be clear, a statement that was made today regarding me introducing it, me saying that, that I was in favor of the bag count, and is it botched? I can't disagree with that, but certainly I was not the person who came up with that, that was introduced, again, by, um, our Commissioner General Services, um, we're going to consult with the mayor's office. That is how the program came about and we do need to revisit it. I actually came, brought it to the, um, to the agenda at least twice to see if we could revisit that because it was not working out well, per that from residents. So I just want to clear up that matter of fact. If there's nothing more to come for the council tonight, I will extend motion to adjourn. Move by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Farley. All was in favor?
Aye.
Your turn. Have a good evening. Thank you.